All right, well, for everyone, it is six o'clock. I'm going to call this meeting of the Enfield Select Board to order. We'll start with a brief introduction of who's here from my left.
Kate Plumlee Stewart.
Tracy Young.
John Klug.
Eric Russell.
Alice Kennedy.
And for staff, we have.
Lisa Bonnet line off.
Ed Morris, Town Manager.
Whitney Banker, Reporting Secretary.
Okay, thank you. So first on the agenda tonight, we have an update on community power.
Thank you. Thank you for picking me early. So just a quick, you can go right to the next slide. I want to do a little overview for people who haven't been keeping up with community power in great detail. How it works is we all have a source of electricity. On the left in this slide shows the types of sources, power plants, solar plants, wind farms, et cetera. In the middle is the delivery. Those are the wires that bring the electricity to our homes and buildings. And then on the right side is the people that use all the electricity, the community, our Enfield customers in our case. So basically, how it works is that Enfield Community Power works with the Coalition, Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire to accumulate all the loads of many towns. And by doing that, they can buy power at a very good rate. So having multiple cities and towns gets competitive rates. The Community Power Coalition, sometimes we call it CPCNH. It maintains the program. It helps set rates. It helps to, it does the buying of the energy and it provides support for any community programs that any of the towns like Enfield might want to do. And that's really what we're here to talk about today. And but the distribution company who gives you your bill, Liberty, EverSource, and New Hampshire Life Co-op, will continue to give you your bill. And in that bill, if you look at it, it will tell you where your supply comes from. If it comes from community power, it will say community power. If it comes from EverSource default, it actually might not say anything if it comes from the default. If you went to a third-party competitive supplier, it will say that name of that competitive supplier. All of the revenues and cash flow is managed by the Coalition. So we don't have a lot that we have to do administratively for the program. Over the last, the first year, Community Power Benefits Report shows what every town who's been taking service with the Community Power Coalition has made in revenues. The column that says customer savings and Enfield going across $460,000 is what the Community Power Program has saved for the, all the Enfield residents and businesses that have been on it. So I just wanted to point that out. It's had a very good first year. Okay, next slide. And then every six months, the rates are set. And this is where we have an opportunity to join in. Generally, you'll see at the bottom on the right of the rate setting that happened just before August, it happens in July. And then the rates, the new rates start in August and go all the way through the end of January. Then we'll do another rate setting for February through the neck of July. All the way at the bottom, and you can see in the black, Liberty and EverSource's rates at that time were set, 10.97 cents and 10.4 cents per kilowatt hour. The, just above that granite basic is the first, all of the ones above that granite basic, plus Clean 50 and Clean 100 are rates that you can choose because we're part of Community Power. And you'll notice granite basic is at 8.6 cents. So quite a good savings, once again, from, compared to Liberty and EverSource. Even granite plus, which is a little bit higher, green energy content, is still lower than the rates of Liberty and EverSource. So this has been a great program. One of the, one of the really exciting things that Community Power allows us is for us as Enfield, as a community, to decide on energy programs to help us save more money, to help with weatherization, or to help buy solar panels or something like that. And so the next slide shows how you might do that. Every town is allowed to have a local rate. And we have the opportunity to create an Enfield rate. And by doing that, we can still continue to save money, make sure that rate is lower than EverSource or Liberty. But we can also start a fund that can be used for programs. And I kind of liken this to our TIP district where there's a set of projects that are possibilities for use of the funds. But we choose the actual uses at town meeting. And just to set up the program, okay, let's go to the next slide. Actually, this is an example. If we set the Enfield energy rate to be three tenths of a cent higher than the granite basic, the lowest CPCNH rate, we could save, Enfield has 14,000 megawatt hours or 14 million kilowatt hours. We could save about $42,000, about $40,000 a year in this fund to be used for energy projects. The average resident in Enfield uses about 650 kilowatt hours a month. So that means they would be contributing about $1.95 a month to this program.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Let somebody in.
Okay, and, and the most important thing in red at the bottom is anyone can opt out at any time of this, of the Enfield specific rate. They can opt into the granite basic rate. They can opt to a different community power rate. Or they could even opt into the original default, like Liberty or EverSource default. So there, so it's not required. It's just an opportunity, I think is the way I would say it. Okay. And so how it actually works? So for, for Enfield, the Select Board would help to set that rate. And every six months. And we choose the rate and we want to put parameters around the rate. And the parameters are what we want to establish at this coming town meeting. If there are parameters, if we want to go ahead with a program like this, then we want to give the Select Board the parameters around which they can set a rate. So for instance, the rate can be only two tenths of a cent away from another rate, from the lowest rate, or, or something like that. And we'll talk a little bit more about how you, how you would set the rate. And every six months, the Community Power Committee would provide information about what's happening in the rates and things like that. But the rate setting actually has to happen after we know Liberty and EverSource's rates. And it only gives us about two days to make our own, set our own rates. Which is why what we would have to do is set parameters around what the Select Board decides those rates. Okay, we'll do an example in a, in a minute. The fund could also be, the fund could also be used in a, in a way that donations or matching funds could be collected as well. That's the way I see it. And this is part of the Select Board's discussion, this is what, how we would set up this fund. An example, the example warrant article is to establish an Enfield Energy Fund with rates set by the Select Board every six months. The rate must be below the EverSource and Liberty rate so that we always have savings. And for each rate period, and then no higher than the CPCNH granite plus, which again is almost always, I think it's always lower than the defaults as well. But this gives the Select Board a range to say, we want to start lower. We want to, we have a project, or the rate difference between EverSource and Liberty is so high that we can have three tenths of a cent instead of two cents, or something like that. But they would be choosing between like a tenth, two tenths, or three tenths of a cent. Probably, okay. And then there's the explanation about how we have this opportunity. And the next slide, I'll leave that explanation for a while since I've said it. Then the other thing we want to do is talk about what are the possible projects? What would we do with an energy fund? So for instance, we have a solar array on the DPW building, which is a PPA, a power purchase agreement. We don't own it. But in two more years, it's available for the town to purchase at a good rate. And then we would own the energy coming off of that solar array forever after that. Another possible program is support for a solarized type campaign or support for a residential energy efficiency program where we can help people get energy audits and do weatherization of their homes. And we can create the project to ensure that income levels are taken into account so we can provide more funds for people who have less, less means or something like that. These are all open-ended and, and just ideas about the types of projects. If we have some EVs, electric vehicles for the town, or for, we might want to create chargers for public use. There's our new fire safety building, which could, you'd probably be primed to use a solar array. And certainly HVAC, like heat pumps and stuff for existing buildings, reduce costs. And another idea, so the other, the other way to think about it too is if we have a reserve fund and the rates are, this electricity rates are going up so high, so fast, that even the community power rate has to go up high. We can take a little bit off of that and make it a little bit easier for our, for our residents. So the fund can, is ours. It's our money. It's Enfield's money and we can do what, what we want with it. I think I'll stop there and get questions. Is that good?
Yeah, that's a good explanation.
Okay.
No, thank you. And it, and it's well thought out. Thanks for taking the time to go through what it looked like. Are there questions from the board?
I'm just curious, is there a reason why Enfield's joint reserves are among the highest? It looks like we've got Canterbury, Exeter, Hanover, and Harrisville seem to have joint reserves. But a lot of joint reserves are in the negative.
Yes, yes. We, Enfield was one of the first 10 communities to launch.
Early adopt.
And, and yes, and these numbers are cumulative over time. So the, the longer you've been in the program, the more reserves you, you accumulate, I guess is the way.
Yeah, no, that, that makes sense. Thank you.
Are there other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Please, please state your name just.
Ava Fay, Enfield. Is the funds that you proposed from this going into a capital reserve fund that has a designated purpose, or is this just a slush?
I think that's exactly what we want this to help, the warrant article to be specific about. So my thought was, and I, we need feedback on this, that it should be like the TIP district where it's a, it's a designated fund for energy projects. And the projects have to be approved at town meeting, just like we do with the TIP projects every year. So that makes sense. Actually, I'll ask that also, does that make sense from the Select Board's perspective? Or is there a better way?
From my perspective, it definitely has to be a dedicated fund of some sort. We have to make sure we're doing it properly legally. But from my perspective, that makes sense. Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, Tim and Kylie, would this be an opt-in by the consumer or an opt-out?
Okay, so this would be, the Select Board deciding a rate would be the default Enfield rate that you could, that individuals can opt out of. Does that answer your question?
Well, it means you can't opt into it then.
And you could opt into it later, yes. As a matter of fact, all of the.
What I'm saying is the default will be this rate.
The default would be this, would be the Enfield.
As opposed to somebody saying, I want to add this in.
Yes, I think that's correct.
Yes, it's, it's an opt-out.
It becomes. Opted out.
As, as.
You're automatically in it.
Yes.
Unless you say, I want out of it.
Right, yes.
Okay.
You got it.
Yeah, Sharon?
Sharon Bopé, Enfield. It seems that we're benefiting from a better electric rate now than we were previously, right?
Yes.
But just, that hasn't happened for very long. And now we're talking about maybe we're not benefiting as much from that rate because of this program. I would much rather keep it the way it is. And those of us who want to opt in, just as Mr. Dean said, I'm sorry, Jim.
Let's go through the panel.
Highly excuse me. Said, I would rather have a choice of opting in. Because otherwise, you're sort of saying, oh, we're giving you this great rate. But well, it's going to go up a little bit because of this. And it's not that I'm against this per se, but that just doesn't sound well.
Yeah, I, I think one, one of the ways to look at it is, two of the ways that I look at it is, one, it absolutely has to keep saving money. So it has to be less than a default rate that you would have, you would have got. So that, that has to be a parameter of the program. And secondly, I think it's really important to educate people on opting at all times. So you have options. And even encouraging people who feel this is not the program for them, help them opt out. Like I'd be more than happy to help. And also like at town meeting or any places where there's information, make sure they know that we've chosen this rate as Enfield, but you can choose this rate. And it's this easy. It's really going, making a phone call or going to a website. And the reason is because opt-in programs just don't work. As in, nobody will opt in. Five people opt in and will, you know, there won't be a fund. So it's, that's, that's, that's just the way it is. So I think if we want a fund, then we should set the default rate and encourage opting to something different if people want to. And giving them the information they need to do that.
So if people decided to opt out.
Yes.
Then do they opt out at a lesser rate or a higher rate?
They can opt to any rate they want and they'll be, so today there's four rates. Granite basic is the lowest, granite plus is the next one. And then Clean 50, Clean 100. And they're all giving you a little bit more clean energy in your, what you're buying. So granite, Enfield rate would just be a fifth option between the two lowest ones. So, so you have five options, including the option to go back to your default Liberty or EverSource, or the option to go with a third-party supplier that is not Community Power. You always have that option. And there's no, the thing that's really good about Community Power is that there is no fees. There's no contracts to sign. There's no termination fees. If you want to opt back and forth every month, you could do that. And it's important that people know that. Sorry.
John?
Am I correct in thinking that if one has solar, one has no options?
Ah, okay, so today, if you have solar on your roof and you were part of net metering 1.0 and you know that, you could be part of the program and, and opt into all of these things. But most people with solar that's more recent, the utilities are not allowing, giving the data that allows this program to provide the exported solar credits. So today, you cannot. It's definitely being, it's, it's very much in the legislature and being worked on. It should be available at some point.
I think I see one hand up online. Charles Park. Charlie, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to say I'm very much in favor of this program. I think it's very good. I would like to see 100% of the money going toward purchasing the solar, which we own, the DPW. Right now, we're paying more for solar than we could buy it from the Community Power program. So as soon as we pay that off, then we could do whatever. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Charlie.
Debbie Bellaville. So just to clarify, Tim, again, so the granite basic would still be the lowest rate and this Enfield rate would be a step above.
A little bit higher, yeah.
So everybody would default into Enfield. And again, you'd have to choose a granite basic if you want the lowest.
Yeah, yes. And that would be the lowest that you could find anywhere in the state of New Hampshire. Oh, I can't copy setting.
I'll jump in. Go ahead.
So it's going only for people who are in granite basic then? If you're on a higher one, you can't be in this program?
It's, if you've chosen a different rate, you won't be, you won't be changed.
Right, so that extra amount will not go into the fund.
Right, so if you've chosen, let's say, granite 100.
Right.
The extra amount is not going into this.
Okay, so it's just for people who are on basic.
And it makes it, is it actually kind of a question related to the one about if you have solar panels? Because if you chose 100% solar, 100% renewable, yes, you, you might, you might consider you're doing more for your community to take the lower rate at Enfield's rate. Like, I would be thinking about that. I'm in that exact.
All right. So what are the next steps as far as, you started thinking about draft warrant articles?
Yes.
And I don't know exactly what the schedule is for warrant articles. But when do we need a final warrant article to have the public hearings and stuff? January, January?
Probably December.
Yeah, soon December.
And we'll be discussing them here pretty soon.
Yeah. And do, does the committee need support to?
Yeah, probably just on what, what's on the last page of this packet, warrant article, example, and list of projects. If you think, you know, if you think tweak that to meet your needs, I guess.
Okay.
Next step.
Okay, so this is, thank you for updating us and for preparing sort of how it would work and whatnot. I guess we need to think through how to put a warrant article together, put this to town meeting, if that's what we want to do. I think putting it out to the town for a vote is a good idea and they sell them.
Absolutely.
What's the, is there any, is that, consensus test, the direction we want to go?
Yeah, I guess I'm having a hard time on like the possible projects. It's, and I don't think they're bad projects or bad ideas.
Well, I think that's something that we can.
Flesh out. And that's like, I'm having a hard time wrapping my brain around how you would get that wording wise onto an article.
Right, well, we can look at, look at how TIP did it.
Yeah.
As an example. But I think for now, is there, who's the best person? Are you the best person with town staff to sort of work with them to put together a draft for a future meeting?
Yeah, they can contact me and Alisa and we can work together with our attorney to put it together.
Yeah, okay.
I think one might narrow that as the possibility was.
Yeah.
Significantly.
Yeah, but it's good that they put together a wide list to start and then you, lets you think about things and you go run. All right, so how does that sound for future needs?
Should we, so we'll just talk with.
Yeah, talk to them and Alisa. They'll figure out how to get a more completely drafted and. Talk to them and whatnot.
So then you're in agreement that we don't go forward with writing?
The consensus here was that yes, to put something on, on the warrant for town meeting.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next, approval of minutes, October 21st, 2024, regular and non-public.
I move, we approve as presented.
Second, the comments.
They're very good, as always. Yes.
Thank you.
Owen Bevan?
I.
First, minutes are approved.
A note on minutes. I can't find the October 7th minutes posted to the town website.
I'll check that.
Thank you.
Okay, board reports. Now, let's start with Alice.
I have nothing to report.
Conservation Commission will meet on Thursday, November 7th, right here at 7:00 PM. I will not be there, which I haven't told you yet.
You just heard my Energy Committee report from the originators.
John?
Budget Committee met and on the 24th. And discussed the budget proposals for EMS and Fire Department, Police Department. For me, there were three major takeaways. One, you know how exciting it is that we have a fully staffed Police Department, first time since 2019. And the chief feels that is largely due to enhanced salaries. Fire continues to make progress, I think. And I think there's some, as Ed has previously discussed, desire to cross-train the ambulance folks and the Fire Department folks and thus creating a more effective response. Apparently getting calls of just a large variety of things, not necessarily just fires. So they're reasonably busy. EMS, again, making progress, I think. What struck me, I was absolutely shocked at, we pay them about what McDonald's pays teenagers to flip hamburgers. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or, or less.
That's not okay.
Yeah.
That's not okay. That's my report.
Thank you. Planning Board had a couple of hearings. One was just a boundary line adjustment. But one, we reached it, it's, so we got a minor site plan approval for a coffee shop on Main Street in the building next to Georgia's. Hopefully, they'll be able to move forward with that. That would be very exciting for, for Main Street. And the Planning Commission, the Regional Planning Commission has grants, some grant funding. And they're going to have a charrette on discussing Enfield Main Street on November 14th at the Community Building. That's a Thursday evening. I did not write down the exact time, but we've heard of it. And there's also a survey open online, they said, around that. So I would encourage everybody to go do that. And then just further discussion of potential warrant articles for the ballot this year. Any questions from anyone regarding board reports?
Just another question on the planning board. So as they're looking at Main Street, have they talked to EVA? For example, have they gone to the EVA board and said, hey, your main focus was Main Street? What kind of input do you have?
The Planning Commission is running that particularly. I know they've talked to a number of different folks, but they're at the start of their grant.
Okay.
I don't know if they have.
Yeah, they, they.
No.
It was really weird. The survey was like, why do you go down Main Street? And things like the bank, the church, the town office weren't on it. So I was like, well, these are all reasons I go down Main Street, but they're not on the list, right? Like, I don't go down Main Street just to travel. I actually.
Weird questions, like grocery shopping.
Yeah, I'm like, I mean, I do go to every grocery store you can get to off of Main Street. But yeah, I was like, this was, it was a really weird questionnaire. I was, I mean, I just thought if I was the recipient of the answers, I'd be like, what do I do with this?
I felt much the same.
Okay, I just was very confused. But I mean, we might go to Town Hall more than some people too.
It's possible, but not in the last years.
No, this is true.
Apparently, we won't, we won't be going down Main Street to go to the brew pub.
We're working on it. We're working on it.
All right. Anything else on that? All right, Town Managers Report.
So before I get started, I want to just add a little bit to John's. He talked about the discussion of cross-training Fire EMS. We're actually looking at cross-training police officers as EMTs as well. We definitely think there might be some cost savings in that by allowing them to be kind of our first responders before Lebanon gets dispatched on what we would call more minor calls. They have them coded Alpha, Bravo, Charlie type calls. But you know, every time Lebanon's dispatched, it's almost $400 for us. So if some of the calls that we, you know, are very minor in scope and would not require an ambulance transport, might be able to get there and take care of the, the need. So that's something we're looking at. We are looking at cross-training EMS and Fire, but we're still kind of in the early stages of those discussions. Moving forward with those ideas and you'll hear some more from the Emergency Services Committee. I didn't have them on my, on my manager's report, but they do continue to meet. We had a goal of them getting something back by the December timeframe. The goal behind that was if there was something that needed to go in the budget, we'd be able to, to move it forward. I do think it's going to be a little bit later than that, that they bring something. But we have gotten to a point that they're not, have any immediate need for any budget money. So they're going to take their time and do a thorough job. And probably a little bit after the first of the year, they'll be, will be coming to the Select Board to share their recommendations. From a staff report, we're still down a groundskeeper position. We have released a job ad. So if anybody's interested in becoming part of the staff, becoming a groundskeeper, contact Jim Taylor or my, and he'll get you in contact. The construction projects continue to go well. I'm very happy personally to announce that our three-phase project is complete. The construction projects continue to go well, um, I'm very happy personally to announce that our three-phase project is complete. We have power to the transformer, they turned it on, checked everything the other day, um, unfortunately. Inside the building wasn't ready to accept that power, so they turned it back off, we're still running off single phase, but it's. Pretty much a flip of a switch when it's time to turn it on, so nice to have that project done, um.
Can I just move on from it, there's still like construction stuff there and, and garbage and.
Yep, they're gonna clean your lawn up a little more. Yeah, we'll get that done, I was just pushing, pushing, pushing to get power, hopefully get power. Um, if you drive by, you'll see a lot of exterior work going on, they're trying to get some things done in the fall, they've been planting trees and bushes and putting topsoil. We're getting ready, I think Wednesday is the start of paving sidewalks and then we'll be paving the parking lot. Things are starting to come around outside, the inside still moves along okay, but with some of the finish work, things are. Going a little slower than I think myself and Red Loaf would have hoped, but we're, we're continuing to, to plug along on the finish work. Things are starting to, to look good, I do think, you know, we're later than what they expected already, but um, I do still think we'll be in. Late November, December and be able to move in in January, we were a little hopeful we could move in in December, but I think that was hopeful.
That's the schedule for the elevator contractor?
Um, I need to reach back out to him, I reached out to him Friday, um, they took us off the schedule because we didn't have power yet. Now that we have power to the building, they were gonna meet today and get back with us tomorrow to see where we even fit up on this.
Can we open the building if they aren't completed?
No, they can come any day.
No, no, can we use the building if the elevator contractor has done their work? In other words, would we get a C O?
No. But they should be, last time we called them, I don't think they're that far out, but I'll know more tomorrow when it is. The only way we could is if we made the front staircase accessible somewhere now, but. I, we'll just see how far out they are, I don't think their work's gonna take very long, so once we get them in the building, we can get that done. I definitely think we'll get it done prior to when we would want to move it, want to move it, but be able to move it in January. And then the, I think that's everything on there, um, Public Safety Building continues to move along pretty well, the framing and structure is pretty much complete. They may be doing, I think last time I was in there, they were putting some, some bracing in the walls and just little things, um, but pretty much done, the roofers have been there, so it's technically the building's dried in. They can start doing roughing, they started, when I was there last Thursday, they had the fire sprinklers completely roughed in in the apparatus bay and they were getting ready to move the electricians and people into the apparatus bay. And from the apparatus bay, they'll move into the offices, so roughing is, is starting at this time, uh, they're also working on some, some site work. They put the, the propane tanks are buried in, in the lot now and they're, they're prepping a few things, they did connect water and sewer, so that's all connected and ready to go. And they should be paving, I think, next week, but within the next week or two, they'll be paving the base coat of the parking lots. Trying to get it so it's not a much bit in the winter. But anyway, those projects continue to, to move good, we did do some preliminary reviews of budget and stuff for WIBY Mall and we're, we'll talk about it a little bit more when we get the harvest up, but we're. We're, we're doing well, we're managing that project well and we're coming, oh, that's a lot of budget.
Well, you have the uh, contract on for us, for the town to take over the uh Granite Place Road prior to winter?
No, not prior to winter.
Okay, who, who will be plowing Granite Place Road this winter?
We'll have to look at it, they probably will most of it, but we may need to plow into our turn and, but we can work on that, we would have been doing that anyway, but we'll be. It's a kind of a long drawn in process to do that, I have a version on it since our last meeting, probably will. Do some work into that.
I was asked about um, furniture and whether we had, were using some of the furniture lines for the public safety construction to cover other costs and if we're gonna be able to. Properly.
Uh, Public Safety Building?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we're looking at some, you know. We kind of pulled some of that stuff in the beginning, but we've gotten grants, we've already gotten a forty thousand dollar grant to outfit uh. Yeah, meeting room, uh, E O C with some chairs and tables and those types of things. So we'll continue working through that, I think, just like with E N O. You know, if there's a desk, we can, I don't say re-purpose, but if it's in good shape and we're using it, we can move it in, we'll do that, we're not just gonna buy new stuff to buy new stuff, but. We've been working, I think the Public Safety in a little bit better position for outfitting than with E N O, because we definitely took some of that money to. To try to bring the, the cost of what you called out, but um. Like I said. Thinking of that and it looks like we're still gonna have some money left over, that's maybe a little bit of lines for lifting off the, the outfit, some of the things that need to be outfitted.
As some of these political groups fall out of our state, they leave behind a lot of almost new furniture, uh, in good condition, so just saying out there, I'm not saying we're gonna find perfect salvage items.
Not the Democratic office in Lebanon, it's in Pitt.
It, no, no, that might be freebie central, but there are some campaigns and sub-campaigns and other private money funds that have a lot more money that leave some pretty nice furniture if you keep an eye out for it.
If anybody knows of anything less than that, we'll definitely.
Yeah, no, I just, sometimes you see some really nice office chairs um come up, so I just threw that out there.
And to continue on, um, been working, after coming out of Budget Committee last year, we've been working on healthcare benefits, we're getting. Really close, I think we finalized who we're gonna go with, have a few last nuanced questions and things, just to make sure we're not eyes crossing teeths before we make a change. But it does look like we're gonna make a change from Health Trust to a new company. Um, with that, we'll be moving to a higher deductible plan. With a, a shared cost from the employee than employers into like an H R A, it's not an H R A, that'll help offset the, the deductible for the employees. So um, looks like a good plan with, I'm gonna say equal to better coverage than what we have now, depending on how much usage the employee has of their medical benefits. And with that, it's gonna save the town quite a bit of money, I believe, I can comfortably say in excess of a hundred thousand dollars a year, so. Pretty good change, it's been a, a long six-month exercise or more, trying to wade through all the different things, but it's. We're moving in that direction and I'll keep you guys up to date on what we actually decide to do, but um, have a couple more meetings probably this week and then we'll make our final decisions and. Move into that.
How much did Health Trust, they came back with a huge increase, how much was it?
It depends on the year, this year was nine percent, which was lower than most other towns that I've been.
I've heard some really bad ones elsewhere, so the nine's not good.
Some of them are upwards of fifteen percent, but.
Okay.
So. It's a lot of money, because healthcare's not cheap.
Yeah. Thank you.
As I mentioned last time, just wanted to remind you that Chief Allen and D P W are working on the updated parking plan that we told you we would bring you and. We will be bringing that to you shortly, it may be closer to the, into the year a little after, but we'll be bringing you something to, to update the parking in the downtown area. I've been talking to Ra about a Transportation Alternatives Grant, so it looks like we're gonna be preparing something to put in. For uh, um, do some consulting and design work for alternative transportation for sidewalks, bike lanes and other. Non-vehicular travel through Enfield, um, it was part of our strategic plan, we, it'd be great if we could. Get a grant to have a consultant come in and help us to, to plan that for the future. Be looking at that. I do have a, a letter of support that I forgot to bring with me, but um, I wrote a letter of support for um. The recent Transportation Advisory Committee, I guess I'm skipping around, but. Transportation Advisory Committee from the Upper Valley Lake Sunday Regional Planning Commission voted at their last meeting to put the roundabout. At Route Four and Main Street on the ten-year plan, it actually got voted the highest out of three projects that were presented. Uh, so with that, regional planning will be running an application to add that to the state's um, ten-year plan. And I have written a letter of support for um. Eric Russell, the sign, the select board agrees with writing that letter of support.
Yeah.
Another thing I've been working on, Jim Taylor and I have been working with Sean Molland and the City of Lebanon to restructure our sewer rates. Um, to better reflect the usage of our system on their system. Um, I guess good news with that is as we get that done, our sewer rates to the City of Lebanon will come down. Um, I did talk to Sean today, they haven't completed the full matrix, so they're going to their select, or their city council this week to ask that. To set their rates for all their water and sewer and ask that the Town of Enfield received no rate increase this year as they're trying to figure that out. Um, I have been asked to attend that meeting, so myself and Jim Taylor planned on attending and I have invited um Eric Russell to join as a. Representative for the select board at that meeting, just to be there and give support. I don't know what we really asked about, but to, to be there while the city council discusses that, that rate change, so. Um, and then D P W had some, some notes going on, um, FEMA has obligated fifty thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-five cents to the Town of Enfield for road repairs. Resulting from damage that were caused by the warming that we incurred last year in December. Um, and then they've also obligated two thousand, three hundred, seventeen dollars and sixty-one cents for administrative expenses occurred during the July twenty twenty-three storm, so. Again, I'd like to thank Rob Taylor and the D P W administrative staff here for doing all the paperwork and continuing to push to get that money back for us, it's a. A lot of work and a lot of meetings, but it's worthwhile in the long run, so.
That was fifty thousand, you said, from FEMA?
Fifty thousand, six twenty-one, forty-five for the first one and then two thousand.
And how does that then get allocated?
Um. Then it was December, it'll roll into the general fund and end up rolling into fund balance, that's what'll happen, but it comes back to us from money already spent. Sometimes the December one, we might actually be okay, because we, we might be able to put it into this year's budget to help them because they um.
That's what I was.
They use gravel and then they replaced it in January, and if the money comes back in the same fiscal year, we can offset that expense for them.
You read my mind on that point, yes, exactly.
It'll help our budget. And then if the money's left over, it'll still move forward and roll into fund balance, so.
Great.
Um, just depending, but usually like the twenty twenty-three storm, they usually end up rolling in in a different fiscal year and they're just excess revenue and then roll into fund balance at the end of the year.
So like on that July twenty twenty-three storm, we did substantial gravel and patches, but it's still kind of a hodgepodge of road. Um, how does that ever get repaired without just taking it out of our general funds again?
Which road are you talking about?
Uh, like Lock Haven is the twenty twenty-three big washout and it still looks kind of like a.
It's patched over, it's on the paving land to be paved.
Okay.
Fairly soon, I don't wanna say next year, but I think it is next year.
I, I, I get a lot of feedback from people who are like, what are you doing there? Because they keep putting patch and another patch and another patch, um, and if we got money in. To help offset it, did we get enough to cover paving or we just get enough to cover our gravel and patch, that's what I'm wondering.
Well, it's hard, you know, the twenty twenty-three storm, I'd have to look back, we got paid for before.
Yeah.
This was just the admin part of it, but like I said, it comes in in a different year and. I mean, we can definitely, when it comes in, take it reallocated in the next year's budget if we wanted to for that.
Oak Ridge Road is in next year's budget?
Huh?
Oak Ridge Road is in next year's budget?
I don't know, I'd have to look, I do have the paving metric of what the plan is, I got that from Jeremy a week or two ago, that they've been building a long-term paving plan and. So we'll be sharing that, we'll definitely be sharing that at the Budget Committee when we're talking about paving and the long-term paving plan in the D P W budget, but. He did want me to make sure to let people know that it's, it's kind of a really loose plan, that they reanalyze the roads on a year-to-year basis and. Things have to get moved around depending on what happens in winter and what happens with the budget, but. So we are looking at it and I can pull that up sometime. I think I might have talked about this last meeting, but we have filed our lead service inventory. And then we will be doing mailings next week with information about unknown components and lead service lines, I think it's a warning type letter to people, just letting them know that there may be. Lead in the service lines and to, to be aware of that. Um, backflow testing is complete for twenty twenty-four, so we have backflow devices on some of the businesses and different things, so water can't seep back into our system, that's been completed. The brush and leaf recycling facilities at the transfer station in D P W are now closed for the season. Um, you may see D P W out, they've been blowing leaves out of the ditches around town with the fan that they got last year, that they love. And then we're preparing with our engineers and um D E S right now to, to finalize things, to do testing of the new Marshwell locations that we. Piloted and we'll be doing testing with those, some letters went out to um. Private wells and people around the area off-site to help participate in that and they'll be, they'll be doing some testing, pulling the amount of water we want to pull and seeing if it. Drops any well levels or anything around the area before we actually put online, so um, we'll keep you up to date as that goes, it's a slower moving project, but it's. Good and it's exciting to possibly get our water in a water system.
Do you know if we've finished the water meter project?
I don't think it's completely finished, but it was getting really close last time, I, so they continue to replace them as fast as I can replace them. Okay. I did tell Jim that when he gets to a point where his guys, they haven't, we're going to get to this point where we haven't replaced them all, not because we can't put them in, but because people haven't let them in. And then I'll be working with Jim to bring a proposal before the select board to help us finish out those last.
Do you have, do you have a target date for when the well might go online?
I don't, we're still working through E E S processes and all that, so. They'll be testing, they'll be, I think there's. Quite a cost to put the wells in and put the piping in, so you'll definitely be hearing about that before it comes online. And that's the end of my managers' report.
Yeah, any other questions, Fred? Alright, we'll move on to the business of the meeting, starting with.
Eric, I had one, a small point. We have our moderator here and I don't want her to have to hang around to the end of the meeting unless she wants to, because tomorrow was an extremely long day for her. Is there anything that you need to bring up to us early?
Uh, no, but I'll see you all tomorrow. And dress warmly, Eric, and cozy. Dress warmly, um, touch for the weather, no, and then I'm here to speak on something else eventually back.
Okay.
Or maybe.
Didn't want you to hang out all night and discuss.
Uh, Town Clerk, temporary hours discussions. All right, come on up.
Anything?
Just to set up, I know that the hours, the temporary changes to the hours have been brought up at a couple of our meetings, so.
Right, so I just thought I'd kind of maybe clarify a few points.
Yeah.
Um, the reason for the temporary office hours right now is because the deputy town clerk is out on maternity leave. And both mom and baby are doing great and all things are good there. Um, but obviously that leaves us a little short-staffed on the town clerk's side during a extremely busy time. You know, with the elections and everything else, um, so I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention that before the maternity leave, the town clerk's office hours were open to the public thirty-six hours a week. Yes, we had Tuesday nights, evening hours, um, and it's unfortunate that I did cut those because can't please everybody all the time and. I had to figure out a way that I could balance work and things to do without public there. And still maintain a balance to my life, so what I did was I increased the office hours on Mondays. And Thursdays and Fridays to a full eight hours, so we're open eight to four, the same as the town manager's office. And also on Tuesday, so we had eight hours before on Tuesdays, now it's eight hours again, but only eight to four instead of eleven to seven. Um, so what we did was I went from thirty-six hours, fully staffed to myself. I only went down four hours, so I'm working before and after those hours and on weekends. I only went down four hours. So I'm working before and after those hours and on weekends to try to keep the reporting and everything up to. Where it needs to be. Um, and elections has added a lot to that workload. Um. So uh, there was comments about Canaan and it's great that Canaan has Saturday hours. Um, but I also want to make it aware that they are open Monday through Saturday, nine to three. They close from twelve to one. On Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays, they reopen again from one to three. And then they close again and on Wednesdays they open six to eight. Okay, for me that would be crazy, but um, and they're only twenty-nine hours to the public. So I think, you know. You know, every town's a little different and what works then may not work for us. And I think, you know. I'm doing the best we can right now with what we have to work with. Um. There were comments about people having to miss work to go register their cars. Um, sure, there's some instances where they may have to. Figure out a way to come in for a new registration, a plate change, um, lost registration, things like that. Um, but we do have options for regular motor vehicle renewals. We have the online, we have the buy mail. And we have also the night drop and maybe it's not well-known out there, but people can renew their cars up to four months in advance. Of their expiration date, which um, all the snowbirds know. So we do an awful lot of early registrations this time of year. Um, so I just want to throw that out there for the public. Um. I'm blind, so I need my glasses. Um. There are times, there were questions about at the end of the day. Um, I'm trying to go point by point of the different things that I've heard during the meetings. At the end of the day, um, somebody comes in very close to closing. There's a decision I have to make sometimes on can this transaction be done? You know, a quick renewal, that's, you know. Very proficient in those. I can do those like that, but you know, plate changes and. You know, sometimes it's a judgment call. If it's going to take me fifteen, twenty minutes. I ask them to come back again during regular business hours. Unfortunately, we're not like some other offices where, hey, it's four o'clock, shut off the lights and go home. We still have a whole closeout procedure we have to do. That's um, even entails having to do transactions with the state at night and things like that. Um, so. We're still there after the office hours are closed. Um. There were some, uh, I guess some people have been getting pushback on the hours. Um. I only had one comment made to me via email regarding the hours. Um, so I would welcome anyone to contact me directly, phone, email, however they want to get a message to me, both members of the board. Um, or members of the public, because if I don't know of a problem, I can't try to fix it. Um. There was a question about cross-training. Now, it wasn't really clear as to what was discussed about that. Um. I can go back to when Sandy retired and we were looking for a part-time deputy clerk. We couldn't even get anybody to respond to ads for part-time nobodies. So the decision was made to go to full-time. Um, and that the, it was thirty-four hours budgeted for the part-timer. And when we went to forty hours so that we could get a full-timer, that would give six hours for cross-training of the deputy clerk for the town manager's side. We can't have town manager cross-trained into the clerk's side because there's special. You know, training and things that we have to do with the Secretary of State's office and the DMV and to get somebody on board, it takes like six months to get trained. For somebody who's just out on maternity leave, it doesn't. It 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 didn't make sense. It was like, yeah, gotta bite the bullet and we'll get through the maternity leave, but we're going to have to do some changes. Um, and that's how the hours kind of came about. It wasn't a. Quick decision. It was a discussion that, you know, we've had about um, to try to figure out the, what would be the least impact on the public. Um. So as far as cross-training goes though, we did do some cross-training with our deputy tax collector. She is also considered an assistant town clerk in title. Um, she has some privileges, but not motor vehicle privileges. Um, but she is up and running and proficient in the election process, which is. It's pretty detailed. Um, and their system is a little bit difficult to maneuver through at times, especially right now. I don't know if it's because obviously there's so many people in the system. It's. Got a big lag time and it throws you out quite a bit. Um, but our deputy tax collector, who generally works eight to twelve hours a week during normal periods of the year. In the last two weeks has added on. You know, ten to fifteen extra hours each week just to keep up the workload because we um. Processed over three hundred and something absentee ballots. I didn't get a count today because a little busy. Um, and we also registered. I was like a hundred and sixty new people. I mean, there was a lot of, my numbers might be off a little bit, but we've. We've really done a lot in the last two weeks, which is basically. The first two weeks of maternity leave. Um. Hope that things will slow down after we get through tomorrow. Um, the assistant town clerk is going to work with me all day till the bitter end when we all haul everything back over to the town office. Um, we only know what time that's going to be. Um, so I also want to bring you focus to all these questions and concerns have been about town clerk. I want to remind you, I'm also your tax collector. So. As we look at these things coming down, again, when you're thinking about my hours, okay? Um, the betterment bills are due the seventh, which is Thursday. Water and sewer bills are due next Thursday, which is the fourteenth. And we're going to have second issue tax bills as soon as we have a warrant. So all that takes processing. Um, again, the deputy tax collector has really stepped up to the plate for us. She's increased her hours as necessary. Um, and I think that's a super positive reflection on her worth and ethics and abilities. And it also helps the budget, if you think about it. You're not going to find an employee. That you can hire like that. Uh, she also works in our library, so she's a true asset to the town. Um. So. Yeah, I think that pretty much covered everything that I could think of that I heard at the different meetings. Um. Again, you know, I just welcome anybody to just talk to me. Um.
Yeah.
And I can't do anything if I don't know.
Well, and I just want to. Remind the board or let the board know that when, when we had Patty here, who wasn't a resident of town, there were a lot of things in that job that the state will not let her do.
Right.
And, you know, I went to the state house and tried to get some of it changed and it didn't go very well, but. The the state laws make it really, really difficult to cross-train. I know we have people that work on our staff that are residents that could do some of that, but it's also. Like she said, it's a lot of training, the programs chain up, change off and the rules change off. And so if it's something that someone's not doing every day, they're. Going to make quite a few mistakes. And so it's a, it's probably the hardest position in. In the town to cross-train someone outside of that to work in there. We have worked with them to do a little bit of work helping us out and. We definitely try to help them where we can, but it's. It's difficult. And then I did ask her to explain because I think a lot of people here are part-time to full-time and they think, oh, twenty hours to forty hours. And. It really was an addition of six hours of time. It was not a lot of time. It was. It was just enough and. I guess the how we treat people part comes into this domain, but. I, I don't like the fact that we were trying to hire someone at thirty-four hours because at thirty-five hours we had to pay them benefit and, and yeah.
We had that conversation. I think at the time, John, I feel like that was something we talked about, like, is this okay to do? And my other piece, I remember having a very distinct conversation on was the cross-training was definitely centered around. That tax collector and what we could do to offset there because the pitch was we were going to have a lot of retirements and that we couldn't necessarily offset. The clerk work, but we could offset the tax collector work to a certain extent with people who are already, so having that extra float position. And that's what was pitched to us as a board. I mean, you can correct me if my memory is wrong, but it was. Because it was, it's very hard as a board and people are on you all the time on their taxes and someone comes to you for another part-time position, you're like, oh, boy. Um, and I get why we need it and this is why, but that was where the cross-training was and and obviously it's beneficial because we've got someone who's stepping up right now.
Yeah. And then we've done some other things, um. Past insurance, past laws, those types of things made it to the point where. Those of us in the office were not allowed to take a check from someone for taxes. We've worked through some of those nuances, worked with our insurance company. We can now say, yeah, thank you and write you a little handwritten receipt or the check will be the receipt and we can get it to. Wendy or Jerusha to actually input it in the system. We don't get in their system and input things, but we will. We can take a payment. So that has changed since I've been here, so.
Yep. And one little thing I just want to add, everybody thinks Enfield's a little sleepy town. Since October fourteenth, I've done almost four hundred and fifty registrations. I mean, there's a. Lot of cars in this town. So, um, yeah, I mean, like I said, during the, during this temporary leave. You know, everybody's pitching in, trying to get everything done that we can. And uh. I just hope that I answered the questions. Sure.
I think you're on a very good shot, Wendy. You really do.
Yeah, I don't think that's about that. I think it's about just people being nervous about accessibility. And when you start taking something away, there's a sense, right, that it might be forever. And I think that is where some of the concern is coming from. So everyone who's talked to me, I've been like, you need to write to Andy, to Wendy. And to Ed because they're the two people who you run your portion and he runs the other portion. And so. I, but that doesn't, when you tell them, they don't necessarily do it. And when you say one person, that tells me there's an awful lot of people who are willing to. Crap at me who weren't willing to go.
Right. And just send them my way. That's what I'm here for.
I think everybody.
Alice, did you have something?
When the leave is over, will the Tuesday evening hours be back?
At this point, I'm just focusing on these hours during the leave. We're, we're looking at numbers and things like that for when we're at the other building. Um, there's things to consider. On a Tuesday night, nobody's going to be working alone. Nobody's going to be working alone anymore. The police department is the next door. Um, number one, I'm not comfortable working alone at the, where we are now. Um.
And you're shouldn't be asked to work alone. And and I don't believe that we'll put that kind of pressure on anybody to work alone, whether it's in your present location or back at Whitney Hall. Will not happen.
Right. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, so the discussion on Tuesday night hours would be. Somebody's sick. They, I mean, how do you, how, I mean, would the public rather have? If we were to go to forty hours open to the public, which would bring four hours more than what we had prior to maternity leave. Would that be more beneficial to the public? And it would be eight to four. Like the town manager's office. And then the consistency would be there. I mean, even now. I mean, since twenty eighteen, we've been open Tuesday hours eleven to seven. A survey's never been done as to how many people come in between eight and eleven. I mean, I show up at ten because I try to get some. Stuff done first and I have to hide over there because if they say, well, let me just ask you a question. And that, that's defeats the whole purpose, you know?
It'll have a much better.
I was going to say, the new building, things will be different. Um, but, but you see what I'm saying? I mean, it's, it's, it's really hard to have. Different hours for different, and it's, it's been that way for forever. I mean. We've all worked in the town for a long.
Cooperation piece though with the town manager's office to get you what you need.
Thank you very much for coming in and explaining the complexities of it. Uh. I certainly think so. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And again, I welcome anyone to contact me if they have any questions.
I did.
All right. Thank you. See y'all tomorrow. Remember to vote.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, see you in the morning.
All right. Uh, next up, CIP presentation. Yeah, I'm tired. Come on back.
Good evening. The CIP committee. Met uh, five times. It will overplan. Um, what we're going to present to you tonight. Is the same plan that we presented to the public. The same plan that we've presented to the budget committee. It is a six-year plan, but the presentation we're going to give you is a three-year plan because. We've always seen, always seen that the last three years out are still a wish list because you don't know when these things are going to happen. Um. Couple of other things. You've looked over the, over the last few years, you've always seen bridge replacements in there. One of the decisions that the committee made was that we do an engineering study of the bridges to really make sure that. Which ones need to be replaced, which ones don't need to be replaced. The only one that isn't in that obviously is the Shaker. Uh, Shaker Road Bridge because the state said they're going to pay for it, so. Um, we don't want to run into the same thing we did at Oak Hill where we went out and we. Redid the Oak Hill Bridge because it needed to be replaced. And then two years later, the state comes and says, oh, well, we would have replaced it. Well, you know, thank you very much, but you weren't going to replace it in time. Which is what the way the state normally works. The other thing we've done, you'll see in the um. Facilities, it won't show on here because it's three-year plan, but six years out, we had, we've got replacement of the grader. Which is a four hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment. What we've decided to do is because of the Volkswagen grant.
Mm-hmm.
We're going to put it in every year. Starting now because we've got a feeling that four or five years out, that money may not be there. Um, so if we can get three hundred twenty thousand dollars or a four hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment paid by the state. That's better than us waiting five years out and saying, okay, we need to replace it. It's going to cost us four hundred thousand dollars. So we're looking at putting in for grants for that Volkswagen. With the large pieces of equipments first. If it doesn't get accepted this year, we put in for a truck and see if we can get a truck replaced. So. God, that's the public works one.
Bravers.
Yeah.
I can do whichever one you want.
Hmm?
Which one do you want to start on?
Well, let's start with the uh, let's see, what do I got first? I've got the facilities. Because that's a small one. The only thing in facilities we've got is fifty thousand dollars for. Uh, paving Hughes Park. The paving is broken up. The original paving didn't have the final coat put on. So we're looking to use TIF funds because it's in the TIF program. So that won't even be coming out of CIP.
Does that reflect where in the ten-year plan for the state, we might be?
Well, that's the other problem is going to be, we're going to have to sit back and see. Well, the ten-year plan for the state, I'm sorry, it's going to be two thousand thirty cents.
Well, and if they do what's supposed to oppose, it'd be a, a small little portion of it.
Right, yeah.
I didn't know if we were going to have to do a redesign on our part, though, that would move, say, the basketball.
Maybe the basketball court.
Oh, I don't think it will come that far over. According to their original plan, it doesn't come that far.
Well, we'll see.
Yeah, but I think even looking at the few ideas, I don't think it's going to be a huge parking lot redesign. I think it's more moving some of the other stuff. So. They may take small parts of the asphalt out, but I think overall.
Okay.
And then.
Because right now there's six eight-foot patches.
Oh, they're huge, yeah.
Huge in that, in the uh. The huge size, huge park side, not in the community parking or whatever you want to call it.
Whatever they do, they have to replace anyway.
Right. Yeah. So. I don't think we want to wait because it's, you know, like, could be year fifteen of the ten-year plan that they get around to.
Just know how twitchy people get, right? So when you dig up brand-new pavement.
Yeah. Well, the brand-new will probably be eight years old by then, so.
This is true. Unfortunately, this is true.
Okay, next one is public safety. Um. As you can see, the uh, the big one, twenty twenty-five is the fire tanker, which was. Already ordered. It was um, not in the original CIP plan. So we're going to have to pay cash for it because we couldn't get a bond because we'd already put in the. Put in for the unit. Um, we have the cash on hand. We'll use the cash on hand. Uh, further out the cascade system, which is the system that's used for the air tanks. Um, that's what the cascade system is. And we've got a, moving down the list, a cruiser replacement. As you can see. Seventy-eight thousand dollars to, for a cruiser. Uh, if you look at twenty twenty-six, it's only sixty thousand because this is a new cruiser. This will be the final one so that everybody has their own cruiser. Which means they'll be taking it home with them. They will then not have to go. To the public safety building to get a cruiser because they'll be able to respond from their house. So it's seventy-eight thousand, just, just putting it out there. I've been out, I think I've been doing this for like eight or ten years. It used to be twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars for a cruiser. It's now up to sixty thousand. It's a hybrid though, so. That's a little bit of a savings, but. But th- this is where equipment's going. The other thing that's happening is it's two and three years out now for a piece of fire apparatus. There's only one cruiser out there now. Well, there's two, but if you, if you want to get a Yukon, you can get a Yukon, but, uh, which state police is using. But basically, it's just the Ford Explorer. There is no car out there anymore. It's only an SUV. Uh, if you see there, it says grants and others on the fire tanker, ten thousand dollars. That's what we're figuring we're going to get for a trade-in on the present tanker. Any questions on public safety? Public Works. Big piece this year is the, uh, it's going to be the Shaker Boulevard Bridge, which is the one that's going to be paid by the state. So it's engineering for the first two years, then the bridge will be put in in twenty twenty-seven. The only part investment in is forty-eight thousand dollars. And we're going to end up getting a bridge out of it, because they'll take out the Bailey Bridge. We'll put it out here. We have a washout. We've got another Bailey Bridge that we could put out there.
Or we can sell it for up to a hundred and fifty thousand. It's been projected.
Right, or we can sell it, because we have one bridge already out there.
Oh, do we?
Yeah.
There's one out back.
There's one out back. Yeah. I believe that was, as I remember, because was, I think we paid seventy-five thousand for that Bailey Bridge.
Yeah, this, the Bailey Bridge on Shaker Boulevard has been estimated to be able to sell for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars once we have it.
And this was a decision that was made, that we put the Bailey Bridge in, because the state was going to put it in. It was going to be a million and a half back then, and we were going to have to pay. Twenty percent of that, which the Bailey Bridge, probably will last a hundred years. So for somebody, it could be a good deal. For us, it could be a good deal if we need another bridge put in. Um, then talking about the bridges, the big one's going to be Bog Road, and that's why we're having the engineering done. It's because it's a bridge dam.
We really own that? I'm not sure we.
Well.
That's the problem. I don't think we own it. I think the last tenant of the Shaker, Shakers own it. No, for real, though.
Yeah, I know.
That's a lot of these.
Well, we took it over. We took it over. The state, the state says they don't own it.
Of course they don't.
So, couple of others, um, pump station upgrade is not a CIP. It's a sewer. It'll come out of sewer. Um, so, and also the, uh, the water, phase-two water main replacement, two and a half million dollars. That has to show as two and a half million to us, even though most likely, we'll be getting at least a forty percent grant, maybe up to sixty percent grant, to, um, pay for that, and it'll probably be a forgivable loan. But we have to show it at its total cost, because we don't have a commitment yet.
How does that work, Dan, when it goes, because I know it's listed as a CIP project, but it's an interfund transfer to, from?
Well, yeah, it's not, it's, it's only because anything over ten thousand dollars comes to CIP, whether or not it's coming out of the CIP. That's just so we could keep an eye on, so we can have everything in one place.
Yeah.
Because if you've got one over in the sewer flung and another one over there, you don't, you don't see it. We, we can put it on our plan, so we know, okay, five years out, we're going to have to do this. The other thing is, we're taking the tanker this year. We're paying cash. A part of the offset, so that's going to be Jones Hill gets paid off this year. And there's another loan, uh, for Fire Department and DPW Truck. So there's going to be a savings of about forty-seven thousand dollars payments. Uh, going forward, we're probably going to be doing more financing, because projects are getting larger. Interest rates are going down. Uh, we've been able to do cash for the last four or five years, which with the high interest rates was a good idea. I would say we probably will never finance a cruiser. I don't see that ever happening again. I mean, when we started this project, we were hot, we were financing everything because we had a hundred forty dollars in the reserve. So we said, we're going to, we'll start financing, but it was always, we want to get back to paying cash for things we can pay cash for. And this is, you know, we're getting to the point where we're going to have to start financing some stuff. Uh, but we've lowered, we've lowered the payments way down. The other, the other department is the admin department. The only thing you're seeing there is the ballot counter, which you guys approved, um, at the last, at the last meeting. And, uh, Walk a Mile is the engineering piece, which is a CIP. Is paying, uh, twenty-eight thousand, twenty-nine, six sixty, and the rest is the state grant. Same thing with the, uh, machines. It's a half and half grant. We pay half, the state pays half, just so we can have that second machine. The CIP Reserve Fund summary. Just, it's just showing you where we see the cash being. And as you can see, these, the existing CIP debt headed down, headed down. Then we're going to start taking loans out in twenty twenty-six, so there's proposed new CIP debt. But we've already lowered it in two years by a hundred thousand. We're talking about adding sixty-two thousand to it in twenty twenty-six. And twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, those are projected numbers. Could happen, may not happen. Uh, also, the cash piece is probably going to, there'll be, there's no debt retirements of twenty-eight, twenty-nine, um, because we had started paying cash again. So what you've got is the long-term ones. There's some thirty-year loans that were in there. The other thing this doesn't show in the CIP program, does not show, is the two new buildings. Those were not a part of the CIP plan. Um, and they were separate warrant articles from the CIP. The other thing you can see here, and I said, because came up at the budget committee, further down there, where it shows our fund, there's a twenty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollar drop in twenty twenty-three. These numbers we get from the trustees of the trust fund. We don't know, I don't know if you've found, we have not found out yet what that was. We have a feeling that it was a bad entry, and it got fixed the next year. So they had to, because if you look, twenty twenty-two, there was twenty-one thousand dollars in interest and adjustments, and all of a sudden, there's a negative number. It sounds to me as though they had a bad report, and now they've cleaned it up. So, and the other reason. The other reason why, you know, the other reason why we were using cash is they're getting a tenth of a percent in interest in most cases. That's not worth it. If we can, if we can use cash and have enough to finance it, pay the finance, we're better off that way than having a lot of money in, under the auspices of the trustees of the trust fund. You know, I've, I've said at the meetings, if I can get three and a half or four percent on a CD from Meska my bank, I just don't know why we're still getting a tenth to a half a percent from, from an investment group that's charging us a fee to handle the trust fund, but it's not under our control, and they're elected officials. That's all I've got. If you've got any questions.
Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Look, the charts get a little better every year.
Yeah. You like the chart?
I do.
Okay.
It's a little easier to read.
Yeah, it makes it a little easier, and I, we're not going to show six years' worth because, out there at town meeting, because they go, you're going to spend two and a half million dollars on this in six years? Maybe yes, maybe no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
All right. And thanks to the committee members who will be there.
Yes, thank you, guys.
All right, uh, Union Street, Depot Street, Police Station, Property Discussion. Yeah, so the last time we talked about these three properties, you guys asked that I go out and find a broker to, to look through this. I did write three different brokers to do business here in Enfield, trying to give some local Enfield people the, the business. I did get one response back from Vanessa Stone. I met with her. We walked through each of the buildings. I kinda, I say top the nuances, but like Depot Street, I explained to her that the state owns the land. We own the building, anything else I knew about the buildings, and asked her to give some ideas of what she thought the buildings could be used for if we decided to sell them, and then give you guys some ideas on pricing, so we can continue the discussion. Um, as you know, we have quite some time before we need to finalize those decisions, but it'd be, be good to just continue the discussion, look at that, and see if you guys have the information you want or need more information. In the comments or?
I have all the information I need.
Yeah, same here.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think this was a nice summary that Vanessa provided.
It is.
And provides a nice perspective from somebody in the industry.
Right.
So we appreciate that. We thank her.
Yes.
For doing that. Um, and yeah, there's no, no decisions that need to be made now. We're still sort of on the path we decided before. Um, yeah, no, I think, get some questions, the others.
Yeah, Eric, do you have a copy of that that I could have?
Sure, I can.
I, I can, this one, this one. Yes.
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay, uh, Lindsay Smith, um, and I, I haven't been around for other discussions about this, but I did want to offer, um, a perspective that you hopefully will keep in mind. And that one, as a co-chair of the master plan, um, the master plan and the purpose of the master plan is to be looking towards the future of Enfield and really consider how the town is going to grow and what our future needs are. Um, you know, Dan just gave a great presentation on the CIP. That's what that does. Um, when you're looking at these buildings, I do encourage you, for at least, at least one of them, um, and I, in my mind, it's the police building, because it's next to Town Hall, to really consider what this could be used for besides just selling it. So selling it is going to be one action done over with. We got some money, but we can't ever take that back. This town is growing, whether people like it or not. This area is growing, whether they like it or not. Um, yes, from the last census, we had an aging population and our population may have gone down. That is not population science, so that trend will not continue. It's not going to continue just because the area is growing. And we're, and the, the types of jobs and things that are bringing people in, are bringing in those new to the workforce, middle management, you know, families, um, people of all different ages. And so in five years, seven years, are we going to need a rec center? Are we going to need something else versus having to, we sell this piece of property, we get a sum, and I'm sure will never be enough for some folks and, um, but then we want to build something, and then you have to go through all of that. So that's where, um, I think, I've got ideas for Depot Street. I don't even know the property on Union, but I think especially that police building, like, to also consider not just making decisions for the moment. And I, you know, listen to the budget committees, people are trying to find ways to bring down the clocks of the two buildings and, you know, and that, those impacts, but those things have hit us because we didn't plan for them in the past. And there are a lot of decisions, and I'm not disparaging any past select board or whatever, but I sometimes feel like some decisions were made as a, you know, right now decision or a not-right-now decision, and it goes downhill. And I would like, you know, for some of this, what is, like, what would it hurt to let this building, once it's empty, which is not going to be for a while, sit there for two, you know? Does it have other uses that might be beneficial to the town? Um, can we reimagine this piece of property that we already own? So that's, and that is in line with what all the, the feedback and all the stuff that we're putting out with the master plan, um, is that sort of long-term thinking. So, um, that's all. That's what I was here to say, so.
Thank you. Appreciate the perspective.
That and then go vote, everybody.
See you tomorrow.
The only thing I'd like to add.
Uh, sorry, I had a hand up in the back. Go ahead, Dan.
Certainly did a board first, no problem.
Why don't you respond, and then I will then. Go ahead, Teresa.
The only thing that we briefly mentioned, there are a couple, since we've opened the, the door to a private, a real estate broker, I'd like you to consider having her look at a couple of the properties that the town owns that are truly surplus to the town. Hickory Overlook, Cardinal Place, up in the Eastman area, and also the Forty Acres, which is landlocked on Oak Hill.
The, at my understanding, um, and I've been at the meeting of both the, uh, the master plan and the, uh, the planning board, um, have been that, um, and, and with the, um, polling of the community over the previous couple of years, that housing was a big, um, thing for that, uh, on, on all of those agendas. Um, and it strikes me that one or more or all of those, um, might, if we, if it truly is a priority for the town to have more housing, that those be considered as sites for that. Um, uh, the, uh, they're al- they're already, um, been, um, in, in use, um, by the town. Um, it's not going to expand the footprint of, uh, of things a great deal. Brian Deckman is asking for five hundred K for his building. I don't know what we could get for, um, the police building, but it's probably at least that, if that's truly a, a market value. So something to consider, not just sit on it for possible future use.
Thank you.
Yeah, so being a taxiff for forty-something years in this town, I'd like to see all three of those sold, so that we don't do the same thing that was done with the Shed Street property, twenty years later, finally selling it when we were told when this building was built that that property would be sold. I would recommend the board to put on back it as soon as available and sell. Keep as much parking as you can for you, for Whitney Hall, but put them back on the tax rolls. We don't need any more property that's in Enfield.
Thank you.
Can I get your name for a minute?
Louis Hackman.
Thank you.
I think too, this board has been very serious about making good on that commitment. It took us a long time to get here, but everybody on this board, and we had to put some money into it to get Shed Street out there, and we're still working at it, but I think it's, I hear loud and clear from people about getting things back onto the tax rolls. I do think that the master plan, um, master plan, the municipal facilities committee didn't, didn't make a recommendation to sell the police station, but did make a recommendation to part ways with Depot and Union. And I guess if I had to start anywhere, I would start with those two, because they're easy wins to me. How we do it, I don't, uh, we can work out the nuances, but I feel very strongly that we should divest ourselves of Union Street and Depot Street as quickly and efficiently as possible, in a way that benefits the town. Uh, I like the RFP process we do with Shed Street. I know it's not easy, but getting forty-eight units of potential housing versus one, I think, is a big deal. Um, just selling it for one unit of housing doesn't have the same long-term benefits. So I want to be mindful of our future tax revenue. I'm very focused on increasing our revenue at the same time.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, I, I do think that the police station is in a, uh, special category, given its proximity to, uh, the town offices and the library. To sell it, we'd lose a great deal of parking. We already lost some parking due to expansion of the, of the town building. So I, I would think we need to think about that pretty carefully. And there are uses that we can define for that building that fit with what we need in the town. I, I think that Katie makes a good point about the other. I, I think that Katie makes a good point about the other two, except my problem with Depot Street is the land is owned by the state.
You're ever gonna have to do something.
Right. So.
It's interesting, but I have actually known people, uh, originally in West Lebanon, on, in, in Old West Lebanon, that owned property there, and the land was retained by the railroad for generations, and they went through generations of selling those buildings. And yet the land remained with the railroad for many, many years. So it is feasible to sell buildings and not own the land.
But I think that the, the figures that Vanessa posits here assume the land goes with it.
These, these are definitely a.
And the building is trash.
Yeah.
I mean, really.
No.
So if you don't own the land, you don't own anything.
It would need some effort.
I think some people think that's a treasure.
A little, little step back, right? Right, so, so how we got here, right, we, we've sort of, at an earlier meeting said, hey, we want to move forward with selling Union Street, Depot Streets, and we want a fair discussion of, of all the possibilities at the, at the fire station. This is sort of another step along the way of sort of setting a base on of like, what, what's, what's the view of a real estate agent? It's not even a recommend, she's not recommending something, right? She's simply saying this is what, wha- what her perspective is, which is, which is valuable. We're hearing good input from, from other folks within the community as well. But, but we don't have to go through and make a decision tonight. This is just one more piece along.
Right.
And is working to figure out the details of, of what, um, the property under the, um, ambulance building, what that situation is. The, uh, the Regional Planning Commission has monies around, it's the Regional Planning Commission, correct?
Yeah, the Regional Planning Commission gets some brownfield money for testing those types of things. We've been talking with them. We do need to get state permission to test state land. We can't just go do that.
So anyway, we, that, that process of understanding that situation is, is underway. And, and I think we are moving forward and we'll, we'll be slow as we go. But certainly, this is another valuable perspective we've gotten tonight.
I think the parking kind of, the plan, and that will be really interesting.
Yeah.
To look at too, because even though that's not our parking, we use it like it's our parking. And I'm not really a fan of giving up parking for downtown or already have, I mean, we've given up a lot of parking. We gave up the parking in front of the Copeland Block. That used to be parking where it's a nice spot. We gave up parking in front of Billy's Triangle Store and the old hardware, right? Like, it's nice to have trees in the sidewalk, but that was all parking when I was a kid. So we keep giving up parking and then we say we want Main Street to expand and we want to have possibilities. We just keep giving up parking. We're never gonna get, we can say goodbye to our Main Street, and that's my personal opinion. And so I think that this is a bigger discussion too about what we want Main Street to look like if we wanted to have access to Depot Street is. And, and to a certain extent, potentially, the fire station law is tied in.
I think we do have one comment online. Susan Brown, go ahead and unmute yourself and make your comment. Susan, you're gonna have to unmute yourself. We can't hear you. Can you unmute her? Probably not, no.
No, I couldn't. It's not, I'm sure.
Well, let's move on. All right, we have a second. We have one more hand, uh, CA. Can you go ahead and mute yourself and say your name and, and shot?
Celia Piero, can you hear me?
We can, Celia, thank you.
I would, in, in just thinking a little bit about the, these, the properties, have the, has anyone ever, um, proposed any of these buildings, like the Depot Street building? Isn't that an historic building? And is the fire station historic?
No.
But they, no, just, I'm just asking that question, okay? But let's put it aside for a minute and look at that area. How, how those buildings are built, structured, and what else could they be used for? Could they be used for if something that would enhance the town, um, because it's by the, the rail trail? Could it be, you know, something like shops? You never know, you could put a bridge across Moscoma River there into the Town Hall in the long run and make use of that little area like they did in Meredith. Think about Meredith, how you go up behind the, the buildings up there and they have little roads and everything goes in and out, but they, they were able to connect some of these areas so people have these little shops. So I'm just saying, I'm just trying to open up more thinking than just put the parking there. Think, be more creative, that's all I'm saying. And, and maybe the Heritage Commission should look at the, uh, age of those buildings. That's all.
Thank you, Celia, appreciate it. All right, Susan, last chance to try to get yourself unmuted at this point. All right, we are going to move on to surplus equipment. Uh, Jim has provided a list of surplus equipment, which is the two thousand and six Kubota seventy-six ten tractor.
I move, where we declare the two thousand and six Kubota Tractor's surplus equipment and authorize the public works director to list it for sale on an online auction site.
Seconds.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let's see, discussion on potential use of American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA funds, and setting of a public hearing date. Or reminder for the public hearing, which is our next meeting. Go ahead, Eric. Yeah, so the last time we, we talked about this, um, it was decided to, to put this off till the November timeframe, having a public hearing on the, the second meeting in November to give a little bit more time to, to manage the budget and to manage the Whitney Hall project to see where we're coming in. I was hoping to get some numbers ran for you today, but today was a little crazy, so we didn't get that done. But, um, I can say I'm, I'm really confident and we'll have better numbers before the next meeting that we're going to meet the challenges of this year's budget. So I'm pretty confident that we're, we're headed in that direction. I've been working with the department heads a lot to make sure that we were curtailing, um, any spending that we could, well, like I told you last time, to continue to move through the projects and things we had this year. We had some pretty good savings in the health benefits section, with just changes in the plan, different things that happened, holding off the hiring of a police officer for six months, those types of things really, really helped out in that, in that range. So looking at what the department heads are planning on turning back, it looks like we're going to be able to cover that hundred and seventy thousand dollar shortfall. And so we'll, we'll continue moving through that. I want to run some numbers, like I said, over the next couple of weeks to just have a little bit better idea where we're at. And then, as I mentioned earlier today, we've been doing a, a pretty good job managing through the Whitney Hall project, and I'm fairly confident that we'll be able to hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars for the elevator out of what we planned on Whitney Hall. And I'm working with the budget committee with the little money sprinkled through the budget for some of the outfitting and some of those things and Whitney Hall to go forward. So with that, I'm fairly confident we'll be able to, to cover the, the numbers on the, on the Whitney Hall. I'll try to get you a, a little bit more numbers, but with the, with the possibility of a delay and things coming forward, we'll definitely be entering some sort of negotiations with Brad Love to see who's bearing what side of which costs on those. We do have a guaranteed maximum price, but if they can show that some of the things that we did, the elevator and the three-phase power, those things caused some delays, then we may have to eat a little bit of that cost. So I'll be working through those with them, but hopefully by the eighteenth, I have a little more solid figures for you guys, but at this point, as long as I can confidently come to you next time and say that, you know, we, I'm pretty sure we covered the, the budget shortfall. And I think moving forward with, um, obligating the money out of CIP makes sense, because even if we, for some reason, didn't end up covering out the bond, that elevator money would more than likely be coming from the CIP fund anyway, so. We'll get you a little bit more figured on that. I don't know if there wanted to be any discussion tonight, but we did want to just confirm with the select board that we wanted to set the public hearing for the next meeting.
Think that makes sense.
No, it's fine.
I guess on the building, even if we eat a little money for the delay, we didn't have to pay for these. Now, it's not unusual to have to buy an reason, so at least we didn't lose on that department.
Yeah. Comments on that? All right, uh, moving on, uh, Moscoma Lakeside Park Committee application.
I think she's an ideal candidate, and Weaver's a master gardener and is interested in helping with the landscape of renovated park, run perfect fit.
I, I just had a question, though. This is like, so the Lakeside Park Committee finished the project, and then they have some ongoing, so are they converting the nature of their, are they going to be doing future fundraising? Like, what do we have in place for plan? Because I, 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 I love this and I want, very much want this volunteer, but are we adding to a committee that may be a committee that doesn't exist?
That was what I was going to talk about.
Okay.
I wrote you in my letter, I know the Lake Park, Lakeside Park Committee wrote a letter stating that they would like to remain a committee. I'm with agreement with you. I think the park is completed and ongoing maintenance is something that a, a volunteer group working with the town could do and not necessarily be an organized government official committee. So I still recommend, and I recommended a few months ago, that we we do away with the Lakeside Park Committee, and if they would like to create a friends group or something to help support the park, that, that would be a great way to do it.
I'm pointing at Shirley because Conservation Commission has been in active discussions about bringing some corner, kind of garden club type entity to do some partnership pieces. This might fit with that. Without saying, no, thank you, we don't want to, because I don't want to do that. Um, and I don't want to not say that to anybody who's worked so hard. I think we have a lot of places around town. There's an active discussion going out with the Shaker Museum, for example, so there's, there's no end to the number of projects that need to be done like this.
There's Main Street of Enfield.
Right, absolutely. I went and chopped down some plants myself the other day.
You know, and the other thing that I told Eric when I was talking about this earlier today was I've been really trying to push that we have a staff member that attends every committee meeting, but we have a couple of them that don't. Conservation Commission's one. I have been going to Moscoma Lakeside Park Committees, but I'm not going to be able to continue going to those every month, and you know, it is staff time, it's town money, and is it a committee that needs to exist to move forward, or is it time to say, you know, we created this park and like, like Kate said, I'm volunteers to help maintain things and to think about new plantings or new gardens is wonderful. I just don't know that that rises to the level of a, a town committee that has minutes and agendas and all the stuff that goes along with ninety-one A.
I want, I want, I, I desperately want this person, but this is not a reflection on that, right? I just, I think that, um, the oversight piece is very complicated. I don't want to speak on Conservation Commission's behalf, but I know in the past I've written to Shirley and to Ed to be like, hey, this one's a tough one, like, are we going to have a staff member with us? Right? Because there are ones that you handle that you're like, eh, it's a little bit more dicey than the usual. Garden, garden things are not as hard. They're happy, they're fun, they make our town nicer.
And other, we also have a Parks and Rec Commission, which this could also be a potential landing spot for this. So my suggestion is that we invite them for a joint meeting so we can discuss with them, because perhaps they're thinking something that we aren't considering.
No, when you say them.
Oh, that's, sorry, the, the Lakeside Park Committee. Because they actually do run into some, i- i- if it's, you know, a gardening Saturday, which we all want to happen, if a quorum of their group shows up, technically, they would have to warn that as a meeting of eight minutes.
Which if you're a garden club, you don't.
Right, right.
And you're not making official decisions.
So I thi- so I think it is time to, to sort of vision what, you know, the park is the greatest gift the town has received. There's dozens of people to thank for that, and they all have done wonderful things for us, but it is time to vision what is the next step for this one.
I would prefer that we have a discussion with them.
That, that's what I'm saying. I think we should, we should invite them in and have the discussion with that group as a, as a joint meeting and not, you know, and, and.
Right, just send them a letter saying, hey.
Yeah, no, no, that, that, that's exactly what I'm trying to avoid.
Well, and this one didn't have an end.
Just reinforcing the point.
Yeah.
I would say, like, this one, and I wasn't here when it was created, this one did not have a clear end date, like the Johnston Drive Committee in Methodist Hill. And so, I mean, to me, it probably should have been constituted a little more carefully, but that is water under the bridge. So I think having that final discussion, one way or another, and deciding on a, like.
And they very well have a vision that, that we're not seeing. So I don't want to make it as if without, but, so I guess the question for tonight is, do we want to punt on this and invite them for a joint meeting to have that discussion, or do we want to?
I think this individual should get a note saying we're gonna have a meeting.
Yeah.
And make a comment, be part of it. I'd like to see conservation be included because they have some very, have been having some very good discussions about. And we've been, Conservation had an ad hoc committee that went down to Lakeside Park to look at a possible rain garden. So I think it's not a, it's not a stretch. I don't, nobody.
Right, I agree.
That seemed like a viable path forward.
Yeah.
I think that's a good path.
Yeah.
Discuss with them and.
Yeah.
Frankly, I think it does coordinate better with conservation than it does with, uh, recreation.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Yeah, it doesn't mean you can't do nice work together, though.
No, no, there'll be cooperation, but I think it falls in, uh, more alignment with conservation goals than recreation goals.
And if you read the town newsletter that was so nicely put together, that, there was a very nice submission, I think Shirley must have done it, about things that Conservation Commission's gonna do. This one fits very well.
I thought it was good to point those things out so people know what we have.
I thought it was awesome, Shirley.
Yeah, so, I guess one of our next.
We can pull it together.
We'll touch you soon. And the next, depending on where it all fits in and, and what else? Acceptance of donation to Community Nursing Fund, we'll tack a hundred dollars.
I make a motion to accept this, um, donation of five hundred dollars from the Hypertherm Hope Foundation with thanks.
Thank you.
Discussion? All in favor?
Just with gratitude, thank you. Yes, in favor.
Yes, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much to the Hypertherm, you know, Hope Foundation. All right, and then, uh, that concludes the business of the evening. We have an admission about them in a second. As the friend has two public comments, uh, any comments from the public this evening?
Well, it's on your agenda at the end, is an informational item about the, uh, enforcement, uh, actions by the, uh, the, yes.
What?
By now, there's this, uh, of the Johnson Lake property.
I think it was just a, it was a warning to her not to do it again.
Oh, yes, right. Yeah, so it was. Yeah. So we have a copy of the letter, it was provided to the town, and it's a, it's a warning and then instructions on what to do in the future and, and whatnot, folks.
But for people who aren't familiar, a party, a neighboring party went on town property and committed to the, yes, violation, and we talked, that we were, once you find out, you can't just let it go, so we talked about it.
Be required to do anything to replace it?
It says no.
The answer was no, um, it says, uh, please allow these areas to naturally re-vegetate back to the minimum standards.
However, rules and cut down our willow, which.
Prior to future vegetation maintenance, please refer to, you know, closed fact sheet, and then it goes on with instructions on.
There was one, one tree that's substantial on the best, best, best of homework.
So remember on the inventory, there was an endangered willow.
Oh, no, it's not that.
Okay. Listen, I don't want to get into cutting, anybody cutting down endangered stuff, that's not.
Okay, any other public comment?
Um, I just had a question. We had a discussion surrounding hometown holidays, um, and a date. I don't think we ever got a date. I don't think we ever got a date.
We, we moved into the first Saturday, so.
Okay. Did you, did you even know that?
Um, they, well, now.
Well, now, okay. Is it up for discussion during, right?
Do you need a motion going to non-public?
Yes, so we have a non-public session and we need a motion to do that.
I move. We go into non-public in accordance with RSA dash ninety-one dash A colon three. What is that?
Rubbing in roll two.
Two. Parentheses, A, parentheses.
And, and rub in roll one. We need both of them. Sorry.
That's an L.
Oh, that's an L? I'm sorry, small L.
It's a small.
Town manager evaluation and L, discussion of legal opinion.
Is there a second? Roll call vote.
Yes, Kate.
Tracy, yes.
John, yes.
Eric, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you all for coming.
Out, out.
The non-public.